...military, wherever they may be, we bring them home safely to their families. Please help us make the decisions that are best for the community.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go in and try to speak loud enough to people that hear. I hope we get our planning system installed pretty soon. But I'm here this morning to speak of the need for Corners County to hire a road engineering firm. Excuse me, I'm having trouble with my glasses. A road engineering company should be hired to evaluate and document the conditions of our county roads. John Hall can't be here this morning, but she asked that I would give you each a packet of engineering firms that have the necessary credentials we're looking for. The front page is a packet containing information regarding Naismith Engineering Headquarters, which is the same firm that Duett County hired to look at their roads and evaluate their And they did it at the request of their Commissioners' Court. The remaining pages contain information on several engineering firms located in San We need, Corners County needs, a professional engineer in charge of the road and bridge department right now, since we're where we are. And it should be the same as we hired Lorraine Daley for the renovation of the Corners County Courthouse and the other projects that we have going on in Corners County. An engineering firm can be hired to do as much or little as the Commissioners' Court documents. They do everything from designing, engineering, to road planning, construction, maintenance plans, and continuing analysis. We have recently learned that the legislature has appropriated funds for the first time in history for the repair and rebuilding of county roads. And in all the areas that are affected by the oil, gas exploration, Corners County needs to be one of the first to see that's great. To that end, Corners County must have a higher qualified engineering firm to begin the process. You, as the Commissioners' Court, have the perfect opportunity this time to start with the pennies like and do the right thing to residents of Corners County, but particularly to the rural residents who have to endure the role of the government's job.
Good morning. In the recent budget slated session, the Senate Bill 1747 was passed, which provides funding for rebuilding and maintaining county roads in counties that have experienced deterioration of the county or state roads caused by the exploration, development, or production of oil and gas. This bill provides money through grants to the counties that meet the requisite qualifications. These counties must submit an application to the Department of Transportation, which meets certain criteria established either through the statute or by rules, to be created by the Department of Transportation. And first and foremost, as a requirement for the grant application, the county must provide a road condition report for the prior year, and they must submit a copy of the order or resolution by the County Commissioners' Court, which would establish a county energy transportation reinvestment zone. The state has six days to respond to an application made by the county. Some of the criteria that will be used to determine the allocation of funds are, this summer, the number of overweight vehicle permits, the ratio of oil and gas production taxes collected by the COCO, the ratio of well completion from year to year, and the volume of oil and gas waste to inject. When applying for a grant, the county must provide at least 20 percent of the amount of the grant. In addition, the Department of Transportation will establish rules to determine if a county is economically disadvantaged, and that county will only be required by 10 percent in matching funds. The bill outlines requirements for the county energy transportation reinvestment zone, its funding and governance. The energy transportation reinvestment zone is to be funded by tax payers and be governed by an advisory board consisting of five members approved by the County Commissioners' Court. The five members are to consist of three oil and gas representatives that are taxpayers and work in the county, and two public members. We need to make Road and Bridge Department priority to get an engineering firm hired yesterday, so that we can be one of the first applicants for the grant funds to be provided, and we need much needed professional direction for the Road and Bridge Department. One of the things that I have talked about over the years is that the Commissioners, even though we have the unit system, are still required, and one of the major job description items is roads. And tax had prevented, and we never used, a road condition report. Now those road condition reports are necessary for us to apply for a grant. So the Commissioners, I would suggest, need to start inspecting the roads within their precinct every month, and fill out those reports, submit them to the Road and Bridge Department, so they can be consolidated and used part of the criteria or the information needed for our grant application. Thank you.
Skip to Lorraine Daley's item. Number twelve, wait.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Graham Lund, at the end of last year, he developed a fee proposal to do the selected demolition and asbestos that they've been at the courthouse. And his fee proposal was $16,200. As we got into the amount of work that needed to be done for that scope, it was less than what was anticipated at the beginning. And so someone went back to Mr. Lund and asked him if he would revise his proposal to be appropriate for the work. So his fee proposal was reduced from $16,000 to $8,200. So this is for the work for Phase One, the change order work that M.J. Boyle did. So there were less documents he had to develop. I did more of the meeting notes, and so we were able to reduce his scope and save some money. So if you approve this revised fee proposal of $8,200, that will replace the $16,000 one that was previously approved.
Make the motion to approve. I have another eleven minutes.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Then motion carries five zero. Number twelve is to authorize Green Environmental to excavate impacted soils that need to be remediated at the Corners County Jail Site Building A not to exceed a price of 6603.
And this one is at what we call Building A, which is the old gym that's kind of in the middle of the building, and it's where the building will be built. We have more soils that need to be remediated. They took the sump out, and vertically, there were no contaminated soils under the sump, which was really good, but around the sump, when they took it out horizontally, there were some soils that were still contaminated that need to be removed. So this is a not to exceed price. I did go back. The backfill, there's 10 yards of backfill they have in here for $970. And there's also some dirt that's piled up on the city yard that we're going to have to move when we put the sewer line in for the jail. So I went to all our consultants, Geotech, Structural, Civil, and everybody, and got their approval to use that material to backfill that hole, and so we don't have to buy material. So there's a savings of $970 that they're offering us for that, if they, you know, can use that soil. And so it reduces the cost. And that's why I put a not to exceed, because I didn't have the reduction yet. I didn't have approval from the Geotech and all the consultants yet when we put this on the agenda. But it is a not to exceed. We expect the cost to be more in the line of $600. It's going to cost a little bit more, because the Geotech said if they use those soils, he still wants it water compacted in six inch or 10 inch lift, or the six inches, to make sure we don't have a sinkhole later.
Does that area have to be excavated later on during construction, just to say?
Yeah, no, because we're on Pierce, and so that's going to be down at that level where it is. Yes, sir. So this will let them go ahead and get that work done while we're bidding the jail. And then we'll have, next meeting, I'll have to come back, because we'll have to do some more testing once they do this remediation, to make sure that horizontally, we didn't go, you know, we don't have to go any farther. But this is the estimate of what the engineers are telling us we need to do, that expected to be clear after that last testing, and then we'll be ready to start our construction on the jail in that area. All right, I'm just giving a second there. Well, this was the 6603, this is, we expect it to be 6,000 now, but that's the number I had when I put it on the agenda. It will be a not to exceed, or a not to exceed, either way you want to do it.
I make the motion to authorize Green Environmental to pay, in fact, you saw that need to be remediated at the Corners County Jail Site Building A not to exceed the price of $6,028.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Then motion carries five zero. Okay, Lori, your next one is the update on EMS and Road and Bridge.
We have been working on the EMS and Road and Bridge pre-design, gathering information, programming, et cetera. We've visited your facilities that you have here. We've done our pre-design investigation. And then what we also did is we have been visiting facilities that have similar conditions, and also facilities that have grown exponentially, you know, over years, because that's what Carnes is experiencing, is tremendous growth. And so we have, to this day, we've visited two EMS and two Road and Bridge facilities. We have three more Road and Bridge facilities and two more EMS facilities that are scheduled to visit next week. And next Commissioners' Court meeting, we'll be ready to present a document that compiles all of this information. But I just wanted to give you a brief summary of what our activities have been. And based on the information that we've gathered and with the site visits and the information we'll present, then my expectation is we would sit down with each of the committees that have been developed, and be able to come back at the end of the month with a recommendation to Commissioners' Court on some ways that we can proceed. In addition to gathering information on the physical plant, the actual buildings and the site, we also have a lot of information we've gathered on growth and planning and funding, and how other counties are dealing with some of the issues that y'all are facing. So we'll have that information to present also. For example, Spring Branch, Belberti EMS, they have, they actually come up with, they have a full-time person that just does fundraising, and she raises over $400,000 a year for them. So she more than pays her salary for what they pay her. They also have other sources of funding that we will have in our report for you to help them in looking at how to fund EMS, if there's a need for that. The other thing they just went through is, in 2006, they only had four full-time employees. And now they have 31 full-time employees, 30 volunteers, and 15 part-time. So their growth is just exponential. So they have a lot of good advice on how to deal with some of this growth. So we'll have all that ready for you at the next Commissioners' Court meeting. And then another thing that we have talked about, which I know you're looking at hiring possibly an engineering firm that can come in and assist you in getting this grant, et cetera, but I have talked with our civil engineer, and he has done, he has helped county set up road and bridge standards, you know, engineering standards, cuts, or details for the roads and the driveways, et cetera. So he would also be able to help you with that, if you have an immediate need for that as you're working through your road and bridge concerns.
Are you talking about the money that they were just talking about, the $225 million away from counties?
I'm sorry?
Are you talking about the $225 million?
Well, I'm talking about just a need for when Mr. Hancock and Commissioner Yower and I were talking about some of the different needs that the county has. One is you need some road, you need some standard details. If you tell them that, if you tell somebody they have to build a driveway, there needs to be standards, as this is the standard for the driveway in Corners County. Most counties have these standard details, and you look them up online, and then you have a standard for everybody to be working towards. So that was, that was one thing that we were addressing, is he would be able to help you with that. This road and bridge, if you hire an engineering firm, they would also be able to help you with that, too. But I know that you're facing a lot of, a lot of things with the growth. And so I think that our report next meeting will help in some of that, and we're also here to help in any way that we can. So that is my, yeah, that takes care of item 13.
Then number 14, to authorize Graham Lund, if she noticed, to proceed the Corners County Courthouse Foundation affair. Phase One aim project for not to exceed price of $1,814,000. Any adjustment to the not to exceed price will be made in construction contingency.
And that one, the low bidder on the project was M.J. Boyle. We have met with him. We have gone over extensively what he has in his bid, and that he's able to comply with the documents. And then we've also brainstormed and looked at different value engineering ideas, things that can save money, but still keep the same value in the project. And we've come up with between $80,000 and $100,000 in potential savings that I believe are real potential savings that we can, can look at saving. What we would like to do, so that they can get started immediately and start getting their contracts in place and get mobilized, is go ahead and give them a notice to proceed, and that'll give us a couple of weeks to iron out any, you know, the modifications, as well as give Mr. Hancock time to make sure he reviews the contract that we'll be entering into. And I think that contract can be ready for the next Commissioners' Court meeting. So the not to exceed price of the notice to proceed would be the amount of the bid, and then we would adjust the contingency amount in order to be able to go ahead and then hold.
What was the amount?
$1,814,000.
Oh, no, was the bid that you actually got for it?
That is the bid. That was the low bid.
Okay.
That was the low bid. And it was actually about $500,000 less than the next lowest bidder, so it was a very good bid for the county. The next two lowest bidders were both in the over $2 million range, and they were very close together. So M.J. Boyle is, one of the reasons he's able to save some money is he's going to self-perform some of the work that subcontract, he got high bids on some of the subcontract, and that he's able to self-perform. And if those other contractors just use the subbid and don't self-perform, that's one of the areas he thinks that, but he looked very closely, because the concern was, did he leave something out? Was he able to perform? And he did finish the other project, and he gave you back your contingency, most of your contingency, and you were able to add to the scope and use that contingency, so.
I think it was, I was at the meeting with M.J. Boyle and his associate, Lorraine, and Graham Lund there in San Antonio. We discussed all these things, and there's, like, one thing we can leave out, there's a fan. It won't be hooked up for two years. There are no electricors to do this. Why put this $5,000 fan in there? So we'll be ducked that out, and then go in later, you know, two years later when the rest, when the next phase of the project occurs. And injection of the, of the foundation, the engineering firm had proposed injected four feet intervals, they injected five feet intervals with the compaction, the soil tests that they have. They feel that it won't cause any less strength to it, and that will save us $12,000 or something like that. That's the thing she's talking about, that they can cut out some and make this a little cheaper. But considering that it was a half million dollar loan on this project, he had to look at it very closely and determine that he could do it for that price, which they feel sure that they can. So I'll be comfortable with it, and since we have a $75,000 contingency fee in here, we need to go ahead and execute the contract at this $1,814,000 and just adjust that contingency fee. Any savings will be added to contingency fee and pay for unexpected items through the term of the contract, or we'll have that credit at the end of the contract. That's what a contingency fee is.
Will the spacing, the quality still be there to her?
Yes, they refigured everything and decided that it was safe, they rewent over the construction.
Is there a cost spent for the fan to go in later down the road? Does it cost more than the current bid now, or is it about the same?
There is likely to be about the same, and the problem with putting it in now is, how do you test it? How do you maintain it?
Well, I understand.
If the man paid for it, and you had your guarantee running on it, what you bought it, then it would be out of guarantee before it was ever hooked up.
Lorraine, what's the maximum that you'll get back from the THC office on the Phase One end grant?
It was, it was half of that 1.1 million, I think it was.
It was 523,000.
523.
So 523,000, we'd be spending over $1 million of the funds, of the bond funds, on the courthouse at this time. But then we'll get the bottom floor in, which would have been in Phase Two anyway. So it's paying for a bunch of stuff that would have been in Phase Two.
And I think in Phase Two, it would actually have cost you more than, because of how low he was, and then two years down the road, I think it actually washes out.
So we just need to do it, authorize Grand House, that's all we need, just to go. Authorize the notice to proceed.
I'll make the motion to authorize, as written, of item number 14.
All in favor say aye.
And authorize to get signed.
That's usually just, yeah. Any opposed? Then motion carries five zero. Is that it for you, Lori?
That's it.
Let's skip to number 17, Mr. Delloy. That's to discuss, approve, disapprove, or request by the Lucie F. Delloy Trustee of the Lucie F. Delloy Trust to abandon 0.34 Wright A Group of Way Out of Dock or Assam Securing Grant, abstract number 10 in Corners County, Texas, and a portion of the county road within the town of Cox in Corners County, Texas, and indeed, without warranty, a portion of the abandoned roadway to the Lucie F. Delloy Trustee of the Lucie F. Delloy Trust. The abandoned road joins the Delloy Trust property. And that's Erin Delloy. And you said you posted everything and did everything right?
I have, I have everything that was discussed in the March 26 meeting, has been posted, the two-week notice from the paper, and then plus I have the affidavit from Mr. Kuchek, who is the neighbor next to, on the west end, west side of that road. And I have copies of that, of that information. This podium doesn't hold any, does it? This is what y'all requested at that, at that last meeting. Everything's in order. You have, if you need paperwork from the previous meeting, I have a couple of copies of that, but would request that the Commissioners approve that action.
And Mr. Hancock said that he had been talking to Mr. Delloy, and that everything is done. So all we need is a motion to approve it, and then...
I'll make the motion to approve item number 17, as written.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Then motion carries five zero. Sorry, it took so long.
No problem.
Number six is no longer an issue, it can be skipped. Same thing for number eight. Number seven is to discuss, approve, disapprove, establish a procedure for hiring a road engineer. And I put that on here. And the procedure being, I print you guys all a copy of the transportation code. We advertised last time in the paper, and we did not get any, let's, with the engineering firm. We're going to talk about the engineering firm on Tuesday. I just haven't had time to get that meeting ready and post it, but I have talked to David Undergreen, and he will be here Tuesday morning to deal with us, so. That's all on another, okay? This is just the position of a road and bridge engineer. With Mason Lehm. And statute calls for the, calls for us to seek an engineer for road and bridge. That's what was voted in by the voters. And I know last time when we advertised for that, I don't remember where we advertised, but I know that, I don't think we got any applicants at all. And so I called Dr. Worling, who's doing the salary survey for the Corners County folks, and I talked to Percy, and I asked Mr. Percy, I said, "Do you guys go out and do, like, executive search summaries or whatever, to be able to find an engineer that would be willing to meet our needs or something?" And he said, "No, he doesn't do anything like that." But he said, "One of the best bets would be to contact H.P. Zachary, to see how they go about securing engineers for, you know, roads and bridge and doing whatever." So I called them, and I talked to their HR personnel person, and gave me a list of names to call for people that would do executive search summaries, which is probably going to require a contractor company or something like that. But I want to jump, but before I go spending all my day calling all these people to see what, you know, the best contract I can get, or who I can get to help us with an executive search summary to find an engineer, I wanted to ask for y'all's permission to be able to do that, to seek the assistance of finding an engineer.
You know, you might talk with Teaks, there's an engineer that does stuff, that does training for counties and stuff, and he has a list of retired engineers, and some that do part-time work and stuff like that, that might be, or he may be able to turn, inform you of somebody that might be looking for that. I have his name, I can think of it right now.
Well, and they also told me that UTSA and UT, they keep those, like, the Former Students Association, that they keep those ongoing board for the engineers open and stuff like that. So I don't mind contacting the schools or anything like that, to see if they would post their job opening on their we, our job opening on their websites, or for their Former Students Association, or something like that.
Did they, they taught studies, but the group that did that, did they do anything?
Yeah. I actually, I actually brought that up to Texas, and they actually said that they weren't impressed with that study at all. I showed them part of it. But they were, APAC was actually here Wednesday and had a long meeting at Palmer, and they said it was a very successful meeting, but I haven't had the time to catch up on with that yet. But if, if we can, to be able to find a qualified engineer, to be able to come down here and help us, I'd like to talk to some of these headhunter kind of people, or human resources kind of people, I guess we used to call them headhunters, now we call them human resource folks, to see if they can find anybody that would be willing to work in a small county, willing to do things in a small county, or, you know, find somebody that fit, fit our, fit our needs. That's what they kind of do. And by statute, we're supposed to seek a road engineer first. And that's exactly what it says, is we're supposed to use an engineer. And I mean, I think we need to exhaust every effort before we just say, "Okay, well, we can do anything." And if we can get these guys in there to help us, I think that would help a lot. It could cost them money, but we're paying tons of money for a salary survey study, so I think we could pay those, too. So I just want your approval, to be able to go out and see if I can get some of these people to help us.
I will make that approval.
Okay. So we will advertise, I don't know if statute says that we have to advertise or whatever, but putting something in the Houston paper, I don't think anybody's going to, you know, want to be able to relocate here right now. So I'm going to go, I'm going to talk to the people closest, and a couple of people in San Antonio first, for those subjects.
100-ball radius, 80, 70.
And then I'll contact some of these schools and engineerings, and see if they'll put it on their former association students' postings and stuff like that. Okay? All right. Thank you so much.
So you just don't consider an engineer not an engineering firm?
That's, okay, Mr. Simpson, I'm going to work with that engineering firm with you on Tuesday. Already got all that done, but I can't do that now, because I don't have it on the agenda. Okay? This is for the road and bridge engineers by statute. We still have to get a road and bridge engineer. That, we have to do that.
And this is the way?
Uh-huh. I have to go find somebody.
But are you still going to consider it?
I have something ready for you on Tuesday. I've already got it all done. I just got to get it in front of Commissioners on Tuesday. Okay? All right. So... So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero. And that procedure, can we capture that? That procedure will allow discussing with executive search summaries and student associations. Is that part of the motion?
Yes.
Number nine is a discussion and update, possible action regarding the discarded building materials located at County Road 326. Uh, on, I put that on there, where the, the Walfer's Crossing, Donny Wiska excavated everything from the rivers and the banks, and we pulled it up up top. We still have to get all that stuff hauled away. And one of the things that is usually included in these bids is when somebody goes and demolishes a side or whatever, they have a disposal cost included in that. I mean, anytime you have something that you have to quote in court dispose of, regardless of what it is, you should have some kind of guesstimate in there that tells you how much you're gonna pay to dispose of it. Well, seeing since there was not a disposal fee paid, it was kind of dumped on our county road, I got with Herb and I talked to him about it, I think we need to do something to remediate the situation. I'm not sure how we're gonna go about this. I talked to Eric Curry, who was the one that was working on the site out here, he was actually the gentleman that showed up here in court that day, and said that he was gonna help remediate the situation. And his idea of remediation when Pete and I talked to him was, he would provide a loader, and we could pay somebody to haul this off. This stuff is, he's taking what he's hauling off to Capital Cement in San Antonio, and I didn't think that we should have to turn around and pay somebody to truck all that to Capital Cement and for us to dispose of it. That's not fair to us, as taxpayers, because anytime that you technically allow somebody to do something, like what was done there, you're developing a contract with them. And there's, road bridge administrator does not have a, the authority to execute a contract. That has to go through commissioners' court. Any contract executed for the county would have to go through that. So, what my letter says, is it says, "Please note that the Florence County, the county did not authorize for deposit a year degree at County Road 326. You have 72 hours upon receipt of this letter to have the degree removed. If the discarded building materials are not removed, the county will take necessary steps to remediate the degree and seek compensation for remediation. If you have any questions, please call my office." Because the problem is, we're not gonna be able to just leave it sitting there. And unfortunately, I have to send this also to the, to the landowner, and I mean, she's a very good friend of all of ours, and I tried to talk to her about it prior to, and I said, "We have to get that out of there." And she said, "How much is it gonna cost?" I said, "I don't know, you and Eric get together, see if y'all can figure out something to, we can do a friendly, you know, exchange of how to get this out of here." But the taxpayers shouldn't have to pay to have all this done, so if we're born to have to do that, we're gonna have to remediate the situation somehow. I don't know what that is right now. It's not foreplanning, it's just what you do, and you don't know what's gonna happen. I mean, we can't second guess it. So-
So, that fellow, he was paid to haul it to San Antonio-
Capital Cement.
But he hauled it down here, and where did his fee go?
Isn't that, isn't that a good question, or something?
Yes, where did his fee go? Didn't cost him as much-
Because Capital Cement, Capital Cement, he told me was washing that down. I don't understand what washing it down means. And I have a copy of the contract, I put it in my last package. That was an odd contract, it's like two paragraphs that says, "We will tear this down," I mean, not in those words, but, I mean, in paraphrasing, it didn't say much more than that. It says, "We're gonna get so much back for the parts we're able to sell." I mean, the whole bid was just an odd, odd bid. And then it says that your, your balance is gonna be 39,000, but then he tells me it tossed him 16,000 to haul that stuff out to Walfer's Crossing, so he won't go back out there and pick it up. And I said, "Well, you gotta go back out there and pick it up, because you shouldn't have put it out there to begin with. You dumped trash on the side of the county road."
What are his, how many did he say it cost to take that over?
$16,000.
Who said that, Karen?
Uh-huh. And nobody told us it cost them $16,000 to truck it out there. Because I'd actually called the sheriff, because he went after the phone at first, and I said, "Well, then, we're just gonna go see him." And then he finally called me back, so-
Yeah, we take it back to him, just pick it up?
We can have to take it back to him.
I'm serious. I'm serious, why not?
I think we should, well, in the next audit, we'll discuss that too, but, I mean, San Francisco's a sitcom, written for a joke, it wasn't a-
Sounds crazy, but-
Well, what I think we need to do, is I think we need to work with Herb and, Ross is the one helping get the letter together, and Herb was gone last Friday, I think we need to work with Herb. We have to get it out of there, because if somebody slides into that rebar, have y'all seen how long that is? Part of, anything like that, you know, the wet weather, the road, you slide into that, and somebody gets injured, we wouldn't, we're not gonna be arguing about whose responsibility it is to get it off. It wouldn't be fair to any of our constituents to be injured because of this kind of foolishness. So, what I think we need to do is go ahead, I have not gotten the return receipts that says that they have 72 hours to respond to that, to this. I, I know that, that this one probably won't respond, and so-
My, my opinion is, I don't think the landowner really has anything to do with it, not because I know her, but I just don't think she has anything to do with it. I think it's the contractor, 'cause I'm sure that Jeff and I go over and say, "Bring me the, bring me the concrete that has trash in it, with all the trash in it."
You might wanna talk to her, she'll be like, "Well, it's a different story, but I don't wanna get into that." But, because the contracts between the landowner and the person that she hired to haul that off, they both become responsible, and that what the contract is between the responsible parties. And so, we have to go to both responsible parties, and that's the responsible parties. I mean, I didn't like sitting in that letter, but the whole sum of the being is, we still have to get the rubble off of it. You know?
I mean-
I, I, I think we did ask him if he was bonded, he didn't answer us. He didn't, he wouldn't answer a lot.
Jeffrey bonded. Jeffrey bonded.
But I'm gonna let Mr. Hancock deal with all that. Mr. Hancock and I have talked about that, and I could sit here and say, "Yes, we know," or "No, we don't know," but Mr. Hancock's gonna have to figure that out. That's, I mean, he's the legal eagle, so we'll put him in charge of that one. I'm just trying to get it off the road. It should be, look for a-
Yeah, maybe reboot, send it off.
Horrible out there. It's just in piles, all down the road.
So, if he doesn't wanna come back and do it, we're gonna have to do it, and then just, Herb will take care of it after that?
I think Ms. Jordan is right, though, you know, Jeffrey is bonded, maybe she has to, we had to, so she did.
But until all that can take place, we still have to go get it off the road. I mean, it's just-
Yeah, we just need to move it then.
I understand, but what I'm saying, I mean, avenue to-
We're starting a dumping ground in Florence County today, if you have something along that, dumping on some of those.
Yeah, we drove around, looked, looked, there is a lot of concrete stacked, anyway.
Uh-huh, and it should not be like that. We're not, if you, if you hire somebody to do something, and you pay a disposal fee, that disposal fee does not give you the authority to dump anything on our county roads, our precinct yard, or anything else. It just simply does not. So, I just want y'all to know what we're doing. If y'all, and if y'all have questions, please specifically, don't, don't take my word for it, go talk to Mr. Hancock yourself. Go see what you think needs to be done. I, I will work with anybody in any way we can to pick this up. I think on the next agenda on Tuesday, I should know, the return receipt should be back by Tuesday, in which it's gonna be time, I guess we'll have time and then we need to contract with somebody to go pick that up, and then bill for the remediation, but we can't just leave it sitting out there.
Well, I think that letter is a good start.
So, that's where we're at, right this second.
He still has a lot of debris left over there, right? There's a lot of debris left over there on that site. Y'all seen that? It's probably-
Oh, at the hospital?
Yes.
I, I don't go there unless I'm-
You figure, the amount of debris that's left there at the hospital, it's what proportion did that one about? What he put over there, it's about equal, about equal. Can you figure that that cost him 16,000 a few miles away, is what he's saying? He's gonna take that to San Antonio, that's gonna cost him 24,000, a little bit more, that's 40,000, but he tore down the whole building for free?
That's, it makes, James, the whole story makes no sense to me.
It sounds like one of the 16,000.
None of it passes the smell test, none of it.
You know what I mean, there's no way, it's impossible.
(laughing) Sixty minutes test? It doesn't pass any tests. But anyway, that's where we are with that. If I don't hear from them, when we have our meeting on Tuesday, I am gonna see if I can get a bid for somebody to go out there and remediate it off the county road before somebody gets hurt. And if y'all have any ideas or suggestions, I'm, I'm open to them.
We have the one, call it back to them.
Call it back, just go dump it.
Open his cave, yeah, put it back, and he says, "Well, here's your stuff back."
So, then we're gonna go to number 10. So, I, I guess, what is the action? Did y'all want to, I mean-
It was just, it was just discussion, or?
Discussion.
I, I just put on there the possible action, because I did want y'all to, I, I wanted y'all's permission before I went out and got somebody to bid this, uh, to remediate the material. I did want the authority to be able to do that, to find somebody to go clean the trash up. If I don't get an answer-
Be it that it's, that it's the county itself, or someone else?
We don't have the manpower right now, or anything, to be able to go out there and remediate.
I think it'd be better to get some of that outside.
So-
You're gonna have to have special trailers.
To haul it back.
Bots, hail, concrete trailers, I mean, dump, stop.
But is that gonna be a bid? We do have to do something now, but is that a bid to take it to a concrete place, or take it back to them? Herb, can we legally take it back to their site?
Take it back to them? We might be getting in trouble. Ask the landowner, and they'll say, "We're gonna bring your stuff back to you."
Trash tossing could be, could be, without permission.
We have to have permission to take it back to them, yeah. I know, I know we just can't take it there, but you could maybe contact the landowner and say, "Hey, we're gonna bring this stuff back to your facility and even dispose of it after that."
I think we need to do the right thing and dispose of it properly, and then see remediation for that.
Yeah, 'cause there's more stuff than this, what they've dumped from the hospital. There's another building up above there, in the ditch. That's not all from this hospital that's out there.
What, another building?
You haven't seen it?
All that concrete, all that, that all has to be gone.
That is from the Florence City Elementary Gym.
Yeah.
And it got out there in the same manner, somebody made a huge chunk of money off of the disposal fee.
It's all gotta be removed.
So-
That's a mess. That's how I made close to New York, authorize a judge to, uh, to, to solicit a contract, remediation contract?
Yes, please.
And move, and move all the concrete to Poppers, to Poppers on the side, or-
With the concrete, County Road 326. I'll second it, I'll second that.
And if, and if I do anything, I will make sure that they're bonded, I will make sure to register with company, okay?
Yeah, you want one?
Yes, Ernie, we'll capture it as, as you, there it all shall be. Thank you. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Number 10 on the agenda is discuss approve/disapprove moving a concrete rubble from between County Road 343 and 344, and allow county judge to execute the contract with our third-party independent contractors needed. This is James, this is on the parking lot precinct yard. This one, uh, uh, this is another situation that we got into, I don't know how-
We're not gonna be able to do it with county equipment.
That's right, because when, when Dr. Kimball was telling us when, and we don't know how we ended up, we were the lucky winners of another project that we wanted, which was the Rodry Side Elementary Gym. And so, we have that gym dumped on our precinct yard. That was before I got here, I haven't got the contract on that. I still kinda feel the same way. I think whoever was paid to dispose of that should have to come get it. But I don't know exactly who did it, how long ago, or what our legal remedy would be at this point in time, because somebody that tore down that gym got paid to dispose of that stuff, and they disposed it in our county yard, and it is huge pieces of rebar. Dr. Kimball said when they were loading that in the trucks, he said they tore the side of the trucks, something horrible, he said, "Just ripped them open."
So, we don't have the equipment to pick that up?
We're not gonna rip up our trucks.
There's an up to two years, we can't touch them up to two years, or?
I try them for a day.
And it's already been a while.
And so, that's another, I mean, the county's not a dumping ground. I don't know where this perception comes from, but we're supposed to beautify it, take pride in what we do, not make them look like that. That looks horrible, I can see why Dr. Kimball didn't want it there. Pieces of rebar from this end of the wall to that end of the wall, I can see why they tore the trucks, it's horrible looking.
We got several roads that have, that type of debris, and also piles of dirt on the side of roads and stuff like that, everywhere.
So-
I'll make the motion to provide, uh, the tenants, ready?
Okay, and on both of these, I don't know how we're gonna have to do this, I don't know how much money we have in Road and Bridge, La Juana, or in funds to, you know, ramp to amend, but I'm sure we'll have that.
Can that be, uh, special?
Out of Road and Bridge special?
Can it be?
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
I'll second it.
La Juana, on the, the, the special fund, can we use any of that, or, how much do we have? I need to get anything, so much we have in that, 'cause I need that for that capital improvement program too, because that's what we're gonna look at on Tuesday, is the capital improvement plan, is what we need to be able to utilize to grant money. And Steve Holt's just gonna walk us through that, and that's, you're SD and, hey, you're still working on it, so we don't have the concrete thing, what we need to do, I just know I need that. So, I need your help with that.
My, my monthly treasury report will tell you how much we have in that Road and Bridge special, 'cause we don't, I think the only thing that comes out of there is our, uh, other water tax, insurance, so. The report I gave you at the end of last month, or from last month, should pretty much, be pretty close to-
Can this be deemed special?
The Road and Bridge special, yeah, it, it says Road and Bridge special.
That's gonna have to look at statutes and see what those funds can be used for.
Okay. And that's where we're gonna end up being next. I just, if anybody sees anybody, folks, we cannot authorize or make contracts, all these are contracts that were never passed through the court, and they're gonna cost the taxpayers a ton of money, which is totally unfair, totally less taxpayer abuse at best. Number 15 is to discuss approve/disapprove advertising for bids for the parking lot in it on the square on the street.
Okay, I've gotten the survey. We bid this last year, and it was illegal, we had to have an engineer before we would bid it. So, you didn't, didn't get it. All right. I've gotten the survey, and have engineer working on the specification for the parking lot back here, and, uh, as soon as he gets that, which will be probably by next week, Wednesday or Thursday, then we'll be ready to add the contract.
Okay, being wrong, parking lot, can I ask a question? The house.
No.
We gonna stop at the house? At Joe's house? We have, we have nothing, we don't have anything concrete with Joe. We're talking about him, about, maybe trading with him, or doing something to get the property, but we're gonna stop. The city has approved to give us half of that attic, they have no utilities in it. We can use half of that for the parking lot and go right down to Joe's property, I'm talking about, this time. Okay, my next question would be, is that, do we need that house, that parking lot?
Well, I'm having plans, well, we need a parking lot, and-
Do we need the house? I mean, do we, can we just stop at that house? We can stop right there and we can have a green and a parking lot, I'll say, behind this here to the street, and then we can add new parking lot later or whatever. Cause I've had a lot of people contact me, they're not really favored, though, the county, you know, purchasing that house for, for the parking lot, that we can't use it. That much, we should maybe look at, if you can't negotiate with them, we need to look at probably, an eminent domain type thing for neither of the, of the county. Training I went to last year, we need a record storage building. We have to have, uh, environmentally intact record storage building. We're gonna have to be aware, and have to be a place for it. And we can, I'm gonna need other, more of a space. And we will, we could use that property, Shelby. We don't have to have it for parking lot, that's your...
That's reasonable question, yeah.
But if we just eminent domain, wouldn't that be like taking away from Joe?
No, it's... I mean, I hate to use that, I hate to use that word, but it just, I mean, you know, I've got a lot of people calling me, they're really upset about the price that was stated in, and I wasn't here for the meeting, but a lot of people are calling, they're very upset about that price, but that amount of money that was discussed, there's a lot more use that could be done out of it. I asked Lorraine this morning, I said, "Is there a possible way that the parking lot could be the jail?" I mean, you know, just out of curiosity, I've had some people asking that too, and she said, "No, it wouldn't work because it's size of the jail." And if they did, they'd have to go upstairs, make a two, two-story, and then it would, it would cause more problems.
Well, I, I think one of the things with Joe too, Joe was here before we were, and he wants to, you know, let alone till whatever, I'm okay by that too, because the thought of, that's kind of like the voice, and then to come in and, like, here. I mean, Joe was happy here for forever before we got here.
I understand, I understand, you know.
So... I don't want somebody to move me out of my house.
Pete, that parking lot's gonna hold at least sixty cars, sixty vehicles?
I think it was thirty-nine vehicles.
On this area here?
From this, that's just from this area.
Is that with, without Joe's house? Without Joe's house?
Without Joe's.
That's what I...
That just wanted to add it right there, right, this dump.
And what makes the car park a lot better? How many cars?
Looks like just a lot more than thirty?
It's about that. It's close to thirty-nine, close to the same number.
Well, that'd be any color. I don't know. Fix that one, leave that out. For right now.
Oh, well.
Anyway, I'll make the motion to approve advertising, being the parking lot at that next turn.
And is that just the new, or is that repairing the old also?
No, that's just...
Just, just right here, right now.
So why can't we make it all be one parking lot? On the old, we're gonna have to get THC approval. They have a easement on that property, we have to go through them, get approval, and do whatever we can with that parking lot.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Your second. Any opposed?
Mr. Carr, here, Pete second.
None. Motion carries five zero. Number sixteen is discuss approve disapprove the blocking subdivision ordinance for Horns County, Shelby.
Uh, I've got a copy of subdivision ordinance from Wilson County, it's very comprehensive, detailed, very strict subdivision ordinance. I gave it to Herb. Uh, he reviewed it and tweaked it and made modifications to reference Horns County's, uh... There's one thing in it though, that, uh, it references a, a county review board, which would consist of two commissioners, uh, the county treasurer, I think, I mean, excuse me, the county, uh, attorney, and I believe the county clerk, emergency manager coordinator, and it's like seven people in it, and a citizen from the outside. Uh, the, the, uh, seven, look at it. But anyway, uh, it's a very comprehensive plan. It, it specifies, and, uh, Ms. Dempsey, you're like this, it specifies a engineer to review the plan. A county engineer, or a county, or an individual engineer, however you wanna do it. Somebody that is, could be on a retainer, or a, uh, on staff, however it goes. The reason is, one thing, it, it, this development review committee, and it specifies a lot here about emergency manager coordinator. And I wanna explain one thing, Wilson County has, their emergency manager coordinator is their nine-one-one person, their flood control person, uh, well, she runs that whole office, so that whole office works out of her office. It's like four or five offices within that one. And so wherever, and wherever you see in this, in this, uh, subdivision where it says, uh, it references, uh, a, uh, county emergency management thing, that's, that's what that is. They, Wilson County also has a county health and safety officer, named Edward Baker. And Edwin, he pretty much, I, I believe he's the enforcer of permits and, uh, flood plan issues and stuff like that, he verifies, you know, that, that the drive will leadership like it should be, and stuff like that. Uh, it, and it has got forms in the back, it's a, it's a pretty comprehensive checklist of different forms. If you go back to probably like forty-seven, I think it is, it gives you illustrations on, on the, there's easements on how to, how to put in parking lots. It specifies the roads, the toxic block flood control sewage system. Uh, if there has to be a fire suppression system put in, if the guy has to put in a water tank, it specifies what size it would have to be, uh, who'd be in charge of, of, of what. And then again, how to, if they start putting in the subdivision, or when they start doing, they just feel that they can't do it, there's a process to, to, uh, pull it out of it. There's several attachments on page forty-six, if you look through there, it's got a schedule of fees. Application for a feet flat is a hundred dollars. Application for a free flat with roads is three thousand plus one hundred dollars for every lot. Minimum application fee for all subdivisions, five hundred, to mend a flat, two hundred, and it just goes on. It does not, Pete asked a question earlier with me, we were talking, it does not address man camps, did not address, uh, RV trailer parks at this time. However, I provided Herb with a copy of a subdivision ordinance, or of an ordinance for man camps and trailer parks. And he's in the process of reviewing those at this time. Uh, I strongly believe that we need a subdivision ordinance. If, if you heard Lorraine talking earlier about how the county would be growing, I mean, there, there, other people have done it, so, uh, I really believe that the subdivision ordinance is something to, to be, to be approved. It's, again, it's very detailed. Herb, can you comment on anything that you saw? It's just a very detailed roadmap on how to put a subdivision together. I asked each of you to look at it closely, because it, it is a, it's a big step forward as far as the county, Shelby. It addresses the nine-one-one, addresses the road names. It specifies what's, what color the sign should be for, for a county road, a private road. Water storage tank approval inspection, and then there's the health department approval inspection. You know, it can address sewage issues. There's a construction bond, financial guarantee. It says several, there's several documents in this thing. I know it's a lot, you know, to look at, to review, but it's something that's been in place already in Wilson County. It is a spot there, it says for communications, and it, it talks with the commissioners of each precinct, being, you know, discussed with the developer about what's going in in their precinct, so they have an idea to tell their constituents what's going on, as well as everybody being informed to what, to what problem, what, what issues are there. I think it's something that we've needed for a long time, I think we've been behind the curve on some issues, but to me, that, this, this subdivision ordinance is something that, that's gonna push us forward into trying to regulate our county.
Do you want, are you wanting to adopt it or are you not?
I want you to re, I was, I was wanting to adopt it, I know y'all hadn't gotten it, I would rather you read it, we could adopt it next meeting.
Do you want to, uh, appoint somebody at the next meeting? We'll work on it.
We can work on it, but it's, what it is, is, it's, uh...
Page seven.
Okay, there's a few things we have to determine if we adopt this. How many people we're gonna have to hire, or what new position will there be to stay in compliance with it?
We'll have to have that engineer first, I'm working on that engineer.
So, anyway, there's several things that we have, we can't just adopt it and say, "Okay, no, we have subdivision."
I know, but, 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 but you have special projects that you have right now that can be doing some of that. You've got a nine-one-one coordinator, so they can use some of that. But when the engineer comes online, uh, you will have to have that. Uh, but, the, like I said, the, the, the development review board should be composed of two commissioners, the county attorney, the coordinator, the Horns County, uh, administration, and the engineer staff, one public member at large. And the quorum should consist of four members, unless two or more seats are vacant, in which case it's four, so we agree. And the county clerk can be just part of it, uh, and members on the thing, it specifies, on, on, on page, uh, seven, I believe it is, under administration, it tells you how to run, how, how the board is set up. We don't have to, I don't, you know, we don't have to approve it today, I'm not asking to approve it today. I wanna get this on the table, I want people, I want us to, to start looking at it, to move forward, and so we can at least be in a position before we get caught up with something that people coming in and just, you know, throw in a road or something together, don't, nothing's up to code, and things like that. The county fire marshal needs to be consulted on some of those issues too, so. Him or Dwayne, it's. But, but there's, you know, there's a lot to it. So I urge all of y'all to read it, review it. Some of it's pretty standard, after you get to the attachments, it just, it gives you the dimensions of how to build a road, ditches, culverts, what's, what's expected to be in these things, the entrances and stuff like that. Some of that's pretty standard, and the forms are pretty standard too. I mean, they did their detail, it's a service, it's a checklist of what they have to do before they can even, it specifies the size type you need to have, twelve-point height, and how much you need to, uh, how many days they have to file it. If, if we can't accept, the board can't accept nothing till the, all the checklist is completed, everything is signed. FEMA flood map is required, it's, I mean, it's very detailed as to what it is. And I strongly urge you all to look at that, because what we do here is gonna, I think, set up a, a standard for, for, for Horns County to be compliant in a more of a progressive area of growth.
I do agree, Shelby, we do need to ask.
So are we gonna take that action, everybody's gonna read over it, kind of come up with ideas? And you wanna see if you can find your member at large? And we'll discuss the appointment, we'll figure you somebody out?
First, we'll wait, we'll wait till we get the engineering firm and put that in place.
Let's, let me know when you wanna put it back on the agenda.
I'll, I'll this with you.
Okay. All right. So number eighteen, is discuss approve disapprove entering into an interlocal agreement for narcotics K-9. You just quote PD, uh, as agreement with, by eight, first you just logistic attorney's office to this, this Horns County Sheriff's Office, and searching for illegal narcotics. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Ari. This is, uh, Renee Penney, our district attorney, purchased a K-9 for the city of Hope, for Hope Police Department, and they came up with an interlocal agreement. If, for some reason, we call and need the K-9 to assistance on a traffic stop, or a building search, or, you know, a residential search, that's the agreement that we agreed that we have to go by. That was written by the district attorney's office, or district attorney's, Renee Penney, and Hope Police Department. I know the city of the current city is also gonna go by that same, uh, contract and, and there to prove, and I guess we just need to, to, to... I've met with them before, and, and, you know.
Dwayne, explain to me how, how, okay, they seize something, or they find money, or what, it's...
It's divided by a good percentage.
Thirty-five percent?
Yes, everybody, it's like, they would get some, the district attorney's office would get some, either, you know, our department, or...
What happens if there's a oops? What happens if it's, if there's an oops, like, you run the dog, y'all run the dog through, and then all of a sudden, there's a, oh, we poured something out there, and there's nothing there?
Well, the, that agreement there, since it's their K-9, they probably would have to...
I mean, I mean, I...
Yes, I understand, like, we have a vehicle search, and for some reason, like, my vehicle wasn't, it didn't...
Yeah, it's cracked, yeah. And they have certified hammer?
Yes, sir.
And when that dog comes into the county, are they under the county's jurisdiction?
Right, when we call them in, we write them. All right, when we need to look for the fools, or, or, you know, different, different...
I'll make the motion to approve item number eighteen.
Hold on, Sheriff wants to fix this. Did you fix any of these, or you? Do you have the right ones somewhere? Okay. I love providing all the...
Yes, no, I'm...
And you bring me the... Bring me two, so, and when Hope signs the interlocal, they need to send one back, so we'll have their signature on it. So, when you, when you do those, come down here, come lower, leave their stuff all in here, and just add a signature line for us below. Okay?
You are the right, you put this on it, too?
Yes, sir.
Well, which made the motion not right, put this on it.
Okay. All right. We just do it as written?
You have written it?
Yes, sir. That was you, Shelby?
No. I'm me, Pete second.
Oh, yeah. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Just bring me back to the... Number nineteen is discussion action on vacation eligibility for part-time employees. Current policy states that part-time employees with less than three years shall not be eligible for vacations benefits. In addition, current policy states employees as of December two thousand, that's for sure, do you think?
All right, will you help me with this?
Will you start, go ahead, and then I'll...
All right, the committee met on, the committee met, and, uh, it was a discussion that, yes, some part-time employees that have had a lot of terms of service, and, uh, to better, I guess, to, not to accommodate, but to, to, uh, to give them a little bit of incentive, of staying. And Miss Maney was a library, the library group, I met with Dixie as well, is that we would try to change this policy to, uh, where we take away the as of December two thousand, and then turn around, you have the other agendas listed below to, uh, specified after, like, a, uh, can I go to the other, other three of the center? That who receives a part-time, with one year of completed service, receive, receive five vacation days based on hours worked. Now, Vi, how many, how many, uh, part-time employees do you have? Jan, thank you.
Maybe so.
And I talked with La Juana the other day about it, and, and, and maybe, you know, we can approve this. Maybe we should, maybe we should come into the next budget cycle? That way, the monies would, would be there?
The money's budgeted already, I mean, there's, uh, the library employees are budgeted for fifty-two weeks. So, the vacation would be factored in already.
Factored in already. Anyway, so the part-time employee with, with one-year service would get five vacation days based on hours worked. For two years, it would get ten days, and the ones that have been ten or more years would get fifteen days, again, all based on hours worked. And, uh...
Basically, right now, we only have one employee that's a part-time employee, was here before the year two thousand, and it's her assistant at the library. The rest of them, anybody that gets hired now does not get a vacation. So, they're just one, uh, a paid vacation, thank you, a paid vacation, they can take off, but... Most of the part-time employees are Monday through Thursday, or Monday through Friday, only with a couple hours during the day. So they're just asking in the committee, we met, I think, in January, we talked, the first time, we kinda talked about it, it's been a couple months, that yes, we need to change the policy so our part-time employees would be eligible for a vacation, just like a regular full-time employee would be after one year of service.
But only for the amount of hours we've budgeted to work, can you give them?
So if you work twenty hours a week, you're just gonna get paid for twenty hours that week, for vacation. Full-time employee gets forty hours paid vacation.
And right now, none of the part-timers getting any vacation.
Pardon?
Your part-timer is how, how long is...
She's been there, uh, thirteen, fourteen years, since nineteen ninety-nine.
And what's she getting?
But she also works for the JP, so she's, she's okay. But Ruggie's assistant has been there three years, and she's not getting any vacation leave, and she doesn't have an opportunity to work any other hours. And so in order to keep a good employee, we need to give them a little bit of an incentive to...
Treat your, treat your librarian a bit, right?
Yeah, Betty Plant is a librarian at Ruggie, and it's her assistant that's kinda brought this whole situation up right now. Yeah, La Juana talked yesterday about the wording...
Yeah.
On it, it should be based on...
Hours.
After one year, you get X hours, based on your hours worked.
Yeah.
One week's equivalent, but not, not five days, or ten days, or fifteen hours.
And that was pointed out earlier, and I, and I, and I asked, because I said, maybe I, I didn't wanna mess this up the way I suspended it, but I figured I did.
Well, it looks good to me that La Juana talked about it yesterday, because you're, she's only gonna put vacation on three days, or whatever it equates to twenty hours for that week anyways, it's not gonna be a vacation Monday through Friday. If her budgeted hours were only twenty hours, that's all we would pay her anyways, it would be the twenty hours, so. But I think hours would be better than days, using the word hours.
And how many people, I, I...
Carol, let me spot, let me, I have one part, she has one part-timer. She has one part-timer, there's two part-timers for the library, Carden City and, no, Ruggie and Ball City, but Ball City's already taken.
And many have part-time?
No, no, they're all full-time.
Sheriff's Department has a couple of part-time, just special judges.
And you're not talking more than ten people?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and that's something too, I'm a little off the subject here, but we're gonna have to discuss part-timers when it comes to the health insurance.
Right.
Soon, because of the new health care.
Health insurance, or a pay, a pay deal?
Well, with the healthcare, healthcare, or anybody that works over thirty hours a week is gonna have grand payer insurance.
And that's, that's the statute, that we have?
That's, that's the law, it's gonna affect, and that's something we're gonna have to look into. By now...
One thing I'm trying to do though, is, you know, as Dixie said, said so well, we need to try to keep quality people. And this is just a small, I mean, it's, I guess it's, you know, other than make, make it more full-time employees, did a chosen to work part-time, and to me, we're, we're, we're just trying to, we're, we're kinda enticing them to stay a little bit longer.
Yeah, she said that, yeah. We, the media agreed that it was a good thing to have, that we've been in it to have.
We're ten hours a week, part-time. They would get ten hours of vacation after the first year.
And then the second year, they would get...
Twenty hours of vacation.
And that's how it is now. And that's how it is now. At the end of your first year, you get at least, at the end of your second year, you get two weeks for a full-time person.
Second, ten years.
Second, ten, you have...
After 10 years, what do you get on a full-time?
Three.
Three.
Then what is gonna work for you?
Give us 10 hours of part-time.
Everybody gonna work, work for that.
What are you saying, Tracy?
Everybody gonna work in part-time.
Could you get the same?
Because Ruggie is not getting the same, not a vacation. If you're on 10 hours a week, you're gonna get 10 hours of vacation.
What is plan?
My assistant works, she's at full-time. We're only open 32 hours a week. Two of those hours, she's at lunch, so she works the full, she's full-time for whatever, she can't work anymore hours. So she's full-time, but we're not open full-time, we're open part-time. So she's not working two hours a week or something, or, you know, two hours a day or something. She works from a timely open at 9:30 on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday to 5:30, except she has lunch. On Tuesdays, we're open, and Thursdays, 1 to 5, she works from 12 one day to 5 one day, and then the other day, she works from 1 to 5, because that's, we have to clean our own buildings, so therefore, the hours for cleaning, you can't walk through people right now. So she's full-time for the hours that we're open, that we, she can work, so she, she can't just, you know, she has to be there every day, just in case if I'm going to a meeting or something like that, or to training or something. So she's part-time, but she's full-time.
For the hours, hours.
So there's no way for her to take a, I mean, she could take a vacation, because she wouldn't get paid for it, because you're open Monday through Friday.
Yes.
Like, for all the rest of the hours. And see, last year, y'all approved the Kennedy and Orange City assistants for full-time, with all the benefits and everything. They had 39 hours a week. Yeah, they were working 39 hours, and they do have the opportunity to work for it, but we don't. We're the smaller libraries, our hours are cut.
And that's based on state provisions that the hours are set?
No, no, that's just the way, it's always been here.
Who says the library hours?
I was gonna say, if the Commissioners Court wanted to approve all libraries to be eight hours, five days a week...
There's library boards along.
They can't do that, but the state minimum is 25 hours a week, right? 25, 20, 25 hours, or something like that. But anyway, there used to be a state requirement minimum hours, I think there still is, it's not so stringent anymore, because they've cut all the funding, and we can't get, you know, they can't hold us to it anymore, but, yeah, but the funding was never available in the past for us to be able to...
This, this is a good discussion, and, you know, I appreciate it, everybody, but I think this has been held off to budget time, because we may be discussing, too, about, maybe we're discussing the hours, maybe making 20 or 40, or something, I think that's more a budget time discussion, but, I mean, it's fine, we're discussing it now, going out in my opinion.
Maybe I have to work that into each library's budget now.
But again, you're already, they're already scheduled to work 20 hours a week, they're already scheduled, can pay 20 hours a week, so what's the difference if you're giving them, they're actually working it, or they're taking the vacation now? Because it's, the money's already, the money's already there.
But we have a budget for each library's...
You know, I had, you know, I, y'all committee had a meeting...
Yeah, the, back in January.
Okay, in January?
January, and then another one, and February, and I think another with Mary Ann Simon, and April, we've had a couple of them.
I won't make the motion, I don't, make the change, but we can do it in budget time, but...
We did with anybody else, it was a big fight, you shared it with me.
You know, again, then either, then either, you know, it comes budget time, and nobody can say, all right, no place, we're gonna do away with all part-time, and put all, make everybody go full-time. Is that what you're gonna do?
Well, the discussion now is the, is the part-time vacation, you can't go and...
I won't make the motion that we, that we approve this, and, and to be implemented at, at budget time.
At budget time, with all now. So that her employee can get some vacation leave?
Ma'am?
I was hoping we could implement this effective today, so that Ruggie's assistant could get vacation leave, that she's been entitled to since October. Because October was her third year in the county.
The main are in there one way or the other.
Yeah, it's budget, it's budget.
Does not affect the budget.
Isn't it...
I'm gonna be, put, put the budget, put the vacation thing as of today, with the day.
Will this apply to all other part-time employees, not just library?
Yeah, all, all, all part-time, equity.
That's right, they're all budgeted.
And the other, the other employees, the other part-time, some of them have the days off already? They had a vacation...
Two thousand, two thousand.
Because we flipped the part-time, which is full-time, you're right, some of them...
And all of their budgets, right, this time, prior...
I think that's the, we won't do this, because we can do this all day.
Two thousand, two thousand.
So I'm here, but I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve the address, and it's based on hours worked. All four items? All four items, items 20, 21, 22, 23.
All in favor, say aye. Any of yours? I think it's what you're saying.
Yeah. It's gonna pass.
James?
What do you think?
Sure, make me the good, I get it out of my mouth.
We did it, Tracy, the other day.
I don't know, I understand. I really honestly haven't had it, all, all the time looking over, but, so there's, there's nine or 10 part-time employees. That's what there is, and...
No more than 10.
Let me get this straight before, since I'm the one that's gonna make the breaking decision. Okay, any part-time employee that's been with us one, one year gets five days vacation, but that's wrong.
Five, right?
It's gonna be, according to the hours.
Hours, hours.
Just basically hours.
Hours, okay, hours.
To the hours they work a week.
Since, since, since we're, and I'm not, I'm not, of course, I'm not against, I really thought we should wait to budget time, but I'm not against the situation here, I'm just, like, always, I'm always the one that, if, if it's not written correctly, and we vote on it, we may get in trouble later. Herb, is that, if we would pass that, or we'd pass it to the Commissioners Court, because it doesn't have hours, and it's based on five days vacation days, is that legal? To do that, or do we have to put it back on, or...
It's hours?
I'm don't, I'm always, you know, I'm always the one picking on the items like that. I pick on the items, not because, not against anyone.
And James, I think, Alwanna can help me a little bit here, because the library people may be the only one eligible to have been here for a year, because her part-time had just started, so she hasn't had her year. I know there was some...
Mine's new.
Hers is new, the dispatcher, Jaber's, Sheriff's Department, there was a big change from January 1st, so there may be only one or two people that are eligible for it now, but aren't gonna be eligible until January of this coming year, or even later.
James, if that refers to it, based on the hour of work, we may go around.
Okay, because there, it has part-time employee with one year completed service would receive five vacation days based on hours worked.
But I acknowledge that I, I put that wrong, actually, it should have been based on hours. Because it still says five vacation days.
Based on hours.
Based on hours worked, based on hours worked.
Somebody needs to go through and amend all those, and those need to be done by motion, it can't just be done. You can't say, I'm gonna do 21, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23 altogether.
All right.
So, so if you're gonna do that, you amend 19, then you amend 20, then you amend 21, then you amend 22.
I'll make a motion to amend number 19, no, no, 19, I'm, I'm making it as standard as it is.
Okay, that you're allowing vacation time for, for part-time employees?
Alwanna? And, and, and we delete the, amend that, number 20, to delete the current policy as stated as of December 2000.
Okay, wait a minute, let's do 19 first, please go for the...
I would 19, would you?
Okay, what are you doing to it? Okay, on 19, you, you make the motion to approve that part-time employees will get vacation time.
Correct.
Okay, and Pete seconded that?
No, I'm not gonna second it, get it written right, and bring it back.
What?
I'm not gonna second it, get it written right, and bring it back.
If y'all amended the motions on the agendas before that weren't exactly right, Pete, so what's the difference now?
I'll tell you what I'm over there, I'll amend, I'll rewrite those motions, I'll put them on the general committee meeting.
There's two 69 days, we got together at the Road and Bridge, because we have... But number 19, you're just approving the vacation, are you withdrawing your 19, 20, 21?
I'm not, I don't withdraw nothing, I'll amend each motion right here, but if, if it's gonna be a problem, then I'll just rewrite everything. I'll submit this in the general meeting. I'm gonna withdraw everything, and we can do the thing in general.
So number 24 is payment of bills, so those are no actions.
No action.
The next time you try to amend the motion, I'll just do...
He can't stop me.
But he just did.
Well, but that, he's a commissioner, if he wants to do that, just because y'all come in here and scream and yell at us, that means we're gonna do it, but we're screaming and yelling.
Thank you. When I can.
First 11 items on page one have to do with either the jail, the courthouse phase one, courthouse phase one A, total of $53,315.49. Most all other bills are of the norm. The only other ones I will point out on page eight are road bridge expenditures out of bond monies that will be reimbursed when the bonds are sold. The first six items, total of $7,277.94.
Alwanna, on these, I, I want y'all to know before this, on Road and Bridge, I, I'm gonna withhold a motion to pay those, because I signed for them, because nobody else was here to sign for them, so y'all can vote on that, but because I want to double approve that bill, do you know what I'm saying?
Agreed.
Just because nobody was here, I want y'all to look at what was, are these the ones that I signed for Gina yesterday? So, and we have to take...
So you're saying you won't vote on approving payment of them, is that what you're saying?
Right, they can, because I, I approved them, because we didn't have anybody to approve them, something happened yesterday.
And the total for this bill cycle is $154,768.89. Will that be the procedure for the next cycle of bills also?
I think so, because we need to need to initial those, and they're spending the money, and we're giving the bills, we have to approve them, we have to pay these folks, but I'm just doing it by default, I won.
Just so we know what you're doing.
Yes, I'll, I'll do them for you, so you get, unless Tracy, the Road and Bridge Commissioner guy, unless he wants to sign them.
I can go down there and go with Priscilla, she may not be there in there.
Uh, she might not be.
You wanna...
We might not have anybody.
We want to, I mean, one of us to do it. Somebody, somebody is signing for it.
I think Tracy could do it.
I just did it because Gina was in a hurry, and she needed somebody to sign them, and we needed to pay these people, we all need them.
Do we, do we...
We need a motion to pay bills.
I made the motion to pay the bill.
I say it.
And I, I, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that's with, I'm not paying mine, and you're not paying your EMS cost, Shelby, or do you have any on there?
They would not have any on there.
So are you abstaining from nothing paying? No, I'm abstaining from Road and Bridge bills. Yes. I need a second. Oh, payment of bills, did we vote to pay them? We did, right, yes. All in favor, say aye, and I abstained on the other, so it carried, okay, and then the next one's withdrawn.
That's what I'm gonna go with, withdrawn.